Okay, well, Stanford, a pledge.
Congratulations to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the August 11th, 2015, meeting of the Village of Reinbeck Board of Trustees. If you notice, we're a smaller group, so tonight we'll be, hopefully, well, we're filling at least one of the chairs this evening, both of the spots, but one of the chairs. So, before we go there, I just want to give a little background of how it's going to work out. We have the two seats open, both will be appointments that'll carry through the next election in March. The one seat, which was held by Gary Kenton, will then be up for an election for a regular two-year term, and the other seat, which was held by Hein Sauer, will be for a one-year term, and then the following year, a two-year term. So, I'd like to start by thanking all of those people that expressed an interest in joining our board here. We had, I'd say, at least eight candidates identified, I talked to six of them at length, and between myself and Scott and Howie, we came up with a pair that I think will best complement our strengths and help out the village. So, again, I'd like to thank everyone that came forward. I think any one of them would have been a strong addition to our team, but we can only pick two. So, without further ado, I'd like to make the first appointment, which will be Gary Bassett. He's not with us tonight, he's away, but he will be appointed to the seat that was held by Hein Sauer. And the next one is Sean Kemp, he will be appointed to the seat that was held by Gary Kenton. So, Sean is with us tonight, and very shortly, we're gonna, right now, actually, we're gonna swear him into the seat, we got the oath of office book, everything ready for him, so when you guys are ready, we have Judge Sanchez here to lead us.
Mayor. All right, Mr. Kemp, I want you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sean Kemp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of village trustee.
Of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Mr. Kemp.
Welcome aboard.
So, that's your seat right here, Sean. Oh, okay. You're welcome to bring coffee, if it'll get you through. Oh, we're not done yet, Karen. No, we're not done.
Oh, we got.
We got, you can turn his, the mystery is over, you can actually turn Gary's over, too. So, if you see Gary, please give him a hard time, because he's now officially has a 0% attendance record at village board meetings. Next up, we have Officer Kyle Jennings. He recently, last month, we had him up here, we hired him, but we now have him officially here to take his oath of office in front of all of us. Again, Judge Sanchez.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kyle Jennings.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Village of Reinbeck Police Officer.
Village of Reinbeck Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Good members.
Welcome again. Thank you.
Judge, thank you so much.
Judge. You can take that out, then. So, next up, county legislator Joel Tyner.
Evening, everybody. Congratulations, Board Member Kemp, and absentia, Board Member Bassett, and Village Police Officer Jennings, congratulations all. One thing I'm passing out, and I don't know if the deadline has passed, I think there may only be a day or two or three left, but I circulated a letter last night in the county legislature in support of the bipartisan Sustarino-Kevin Cahill bill, Terry Gibson carried it last year, Sustarino and Kevin Cahill carrying it this year, to make sure that voters here in Reinbeck can, and the Star Library can have a special district. Unfortunately, Governor Cuomo vetoed it, you know, wouldn't sign it last year, kind of a slap in the face to everybody, and, but if enough of us maybe call the governor, I'm gonna give you a toll-free number, it's 877-255-9417, that's 877-255-9417. Five of us signed the letter that I circulated last night in the county legislature, every little bit will help. You're all invited to stay for this meeting, or come with me to the Clinton Town Board meeting, but I'm not trying to draw away from you right now, as we speak, at the Poughkeepsie Town Hall, the New York State Public Service Commission is having a public hearing on broadband, and the need, whether or not, to make sure that companies like Time Warner, Verizon, Frontier, and Optimum expand, and keep promises to build out. And I spoke this afternoon, there was an afternoon public hearing, you can send emails to Kathleen Burgess, who's the secretary for the Public Service Commission, it's secretary at dps.ny.gov. Three of us last night signed my letter to the PSC on that, and from what I understand, broadband is a big, big issue, lack of real, high-quality fiber optic broadband accessibility all over Dutchess County, and I've heard here in Northern Dutchess as well. The other thing I passed around, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if Monsanto's Roundup, or if glyphosate is used on Village of Reinbeck property, I don't know if it's used on Town of Reinbeck property, I'm afraid it may be possibly used on Dutchess County parks. Last night, I circulated a letter, and I'm not gonna stand here and lie and say that a whole bunch of people signed on to it, one other county legislator, April Marie Farley from Beacon, signed on to the letter, but I've sort of been watching the whole issue of pesticides for a long time, and for what it's worth, Bermuda, the Netherlands, Sri Lanka, more and more countries, the number seems to grow every week, are banning this stuff, the World Health Organization found it to be carcinogenic, and so I'm just putting that out there, trying to protect the public health, we don't need Monsanto's Roundup or glyphosate, it's bad for our health. I'm trying to make a last-minute push over the next four months, before December closes out, to get a law passed to ban toxic toys in Dutchess County. I found out that the Kmart in Poughkeepsie and the Target in Poughkeepsie are selling Hot Wheels gift packs, I grew up here in Dutchess County, buying, loving, enjoying Hot Wheels, and the Hot Wheels gift packs have been found to be toxic in Westchester County, I have a feeling they're probably toxic here as well. And so, antimony, benzene, cadmium, lead, mercury, arsenic, Rob Astorino, of course, ran for governor a year or two ago, Rob Astorino actually signed into law legislation that was passed unanimously in the Westchester County Legislature to ban toxic toys and children's clothing containing this stuff, Suffolk County Legislature unanimous as well, I could use your help pushing, to help build the political will for Dutchess County to do this. Across the river in Ulster County, Republicans and Democrats supported the move to, for pesticide neighbor notification, you know, 48 hours before pesticides are sprayed, the late, great Drayton Grant told me this is a big, before she passed away, this is a big issue for her, 12 years later, I'm still, I'm still trying to push on it. So, there are, you know, Erie County, Albany County, Rockland, Nassau, Suffolk, Westchester, Monroe, five boroughs in New York City, there's a lot of, Ulster County, a lot of different places have this, it's just, it's not a ban on pesticide spraying, it's just 48 hours notice, and I could use, I could use your help on that, and that one, my proposal was placed on legislators' desks, we're gonna be discussing in the next month or so, and probably voting on that in October. Just a couple other things, real quickly. YNN, Time Warner News, they haven't covered me in a long time, but one of my coworkers said that they actually put me, I guess, on TV last night about this whole issue of puppy mills and pet stores. The devil's in the details, because, just so everybody's aware, I know that Ulster County has their thing going on, Nassau and Suffolk Counties have passed laws about this, the only problem is a permitting system where the US Department of Agriculture is responsible for checking on the breeders, it ain't cutting it, because they're not checking on the breeders. And so, what we really need to pass is a Dutchess County version of the New York City law, which is the gold standard, I've been in touch with Deborah Howard, who's basically the top expert in the country, organization, the Companion Animal Protection Society, CAPS-web.org, and so, I can't do it alone, democracy is not a spectator sport, so they say, so if you really want to make sure that a real law is passed in Dutchess County, to make sure that the two pet stores are not selling doggies from puppy mills, please work with me on that. The last thing is that, you know, I've been pushing for over a decade for more and more solar to be on county land and county property, so, you know, I voted for a couple resolutions last night for the 2.4 megawatt display at the Array at the Dutchess County Airport. The only thing I'll say is, we need RFPs, Request for Proposals, that's good government, and just as an example, the huge south-facing wall in Poughkeepsie, 22 Market Street, right opposite the Bartolom, sun hits that thing every day, and to get around Dutchess County having a contract, basically a no-bid contract with this company that members of Congress have complained justifiably about, the US Treasury Department has investigated SolarCity, watchdog.org, all you have to do is Google "investigation SolarCity," and your jaw is gonna drop to the floor, why would Dutchess County be doing business, have a massive, a massive no-bid contract with SolarCity? So, to make sure that that doesn't happen again, I asked the Dutchess County Public Works Commissioner Noel Nilly to issue an RFP for solar on county land, county property, county buildings, I need your help to push for that. So, I'm at 876-2488, 4642245, thank you, I gotta run to the Clinton Town Board meeting, thank you.
Thanks, Joel. From there, I think we'll move on to our department reports, starting with Karen McGlocklin, our treasurer.
Hi. Our report, I think you all have it, is for the period ending July 31st. The tax collectors fund ended the month with $1,432,696. The water fund ended the month with $593,797.27. The sewer fund ended the month with $681,255. The vouchers to be paid, the prepaid vouchers for utilities for the general fund were $11,242.46. For the water fund, $6,536. For the sewer fund, $3,496.47. The annual HRA replenished their account from the general in the amount of $28,528. The water fund, $7,0972, and the sewer fund, $8,881. The bills, the regular bills to be paid, from the general fund, total $53,683.47. From the water fund, $11,539.36, and from the sewer fund, $26,427.03. Budget amendments attached to the treasurer's report is a list of a few more budget amendments for closing the 2014-15 fiscal year, so I am requesting a resolution to authorize those budget amendments. The, also included in your financial packet is the monthly operating statement for August, and the New York State Annual Report, I am still working to complete that, tying out the beginning balances from the RDA system has been challenging. Below are the balances, fund balances, which may slightly change after final adjustments are made. The general, $375,009.14, the water, $792,169, and the sewer, $610,018. The capital reserve at the end of the year, general, $171,875, the water, $231,158, and the sewer, $28,0310. On page two, for the water and sewer, I'm still working with Pat to learn the water, sewer billings within the four zones, and for the June, which, the June 2015 billing, I've identified the water usages penalties, sewer usages penalties, and I won't go over those, but those are all on page two. So, the only action I need is a resolution for the budget amendments, and a resolution to accept the water billings with the adjustments.
So, I'll make the motion to approve the budget adjustments as submitted. Discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Karen, on the water and sewer adjustments.
Mm-hmm.
Are those in here, or is it a new format, or?
I have them, I have the top sheet on, but I have all the backup documentation, did you want me to pass them around? I didn't make copies of everything.
That's the one for all the individual accounts that we had to make the adjustments to?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, when you appoint the new water liaison, I will work with them directly.
Okay, do you have the one for this month?
This is the backup, this is the cover sheet.
So, these are both, these are what we would have seen last time, those two things?
Correct.
Or two months?
Yeah, one's June, water, sewer, and July, water.
Why don't we work on putting it back on the one page like we did before, then we...
Okay.
Well, yeah, we can't look at them all, right? Right now, there's a bunch of them.
Well, they've all been signed by Gary before he left.
Oh, okay, by Gary Kent, all right. So, we'll table those adjustments for the moment. Guys, got any questions for Karen?
I just have a question, vouchers.
The HRA annual, then you have next to it, August of 2015.
Well, the August 2015 is that column with the list of vouchers. The HRA annual is the middle column.
Right, does that, does that kind of get added to that other column, for like a real total?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we add it all at once, it's a one-time expense.
Correct, it's annual, we replenish.
Because the health insurance just renewed.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
That's it.
Are you guys ready, or are you waiting for?
No, we're ready.
You're ready, okay, so we're gonna skip around a little bit on the agenda, since you guys are here, so we're gonna go down to special requests under a number, I guess that would be letter E, that's not on there, so that's the Mad Dash, so, come on up if you would, you would like.
Is there something in here?
There's something in here, right?
It's under 10.
Number 10, okay, so what we have here is a, an event application for the Mad Dash, which is held annually on Labor Day, they have a 5K and a 10K road race, and we have with us Michael Casano, and I guess the question had come up in terms of the need to have an ambulance on site for the race, and I know that we were just working on that moments ago, what do we find out there, Mike?
I think we're gonna have a crew available, and it'll kind of work just like the police support that we get, if there's a call, the police will leave, so if the paramedics get a call, then they'll have to leave and address that.
We should be able to staff the ambulance for the event, but if there's another call or something, how is there gonna have to go?
The event lasts, Paul, of two hours, it's over pretty quickly.
Okay, does that meet our legal requirement?
Well, it's a condition of the board, I mean, it's a concern, I guess, with the chief of race, and there'd be paramedic service available.
Okay, so for the future, for all our road races, that'll be one of the requirements, is that we have medical support available during, while there's, you know, athletes or runners on the course. So, I think that would meet our requirement to have a staffed volunteer ambulance on hand.
We also have quite a large police presence there as well for the race.
Right, which says no different than before.
Yeah.
But is that adequate? I mean, if they do have a call, I mean, we do, you know, Jeff, I mean, there are times that, within an hour, we have three calls, and if there's a call that goes down...
That's the only concern, I mean, if we get, if you back and back calls again, the only way you're gonna avoid that is if you're contracted with a commercial agency that you pay them to sit there all the time, but it's, my understanding is that's the way the arrangement with the police is, that if they get another call for service, that they're going to leave for the post and go with that call, if that's my...
Yeah.
...correct, so I mean, that, we sort of have to operate under that same practice there.
Is that accurate, Sergeant Dunn?
Normally, for the Mad Dash, we have a special detail for that, and all the officers are there for that detail, we do have one car available to leave for the calls of service during the event, right, so we'll use all four cars, and if a call does come in, we'll have that one car to go to that call in the village, so.
That's not the same with the ambulance, we have a singular ambulance.
Yeah, and if the state police are available every year, we usually have one car there, as long as they're available, I let them know ahead of time.
Okay.
So, but the ambulance thing is concerned, since the new, all the other marathons now are, you know, have it, we have had people get sick or go down during the course of the event, and it's just a safety factor to have the ambulance on standby, you know.
This isn't a marathon, by the way.
Right, it's a 5K, 10K, but just in the past, few events, you know, Northern Dutch Paramedics, or Reinbeck Fire Department's been there, so.
Okay.
It's for the safety of the runners, basically.
Right. But you do have, there are dedicated police officers to the event.
Correct, correct. It's approximately like six to seven, depending on availability for each.
Barring a massive emergency, they're gonna stay on.
Barring anything else, yeah.
Stay on scene.
Yep, except we have the four cars do the event with the one state police, as long as they're available, and then the one car's kept open for calls.
Okay.
Is there any liability on our part?
Well, I mean, they supply general liability insurance covering the village, it's just a question of a safety event, I suppose if anything happens, anyone can be sued, but again, they do cover you through insurance.
On the other events, Sergeant Dunn, do you know if they, when we have the ambulance that's contracted through...
Yeah, on the running away event, they contract through Northern Dutch Paramedics, and in on...
What, are they guaranteed to stay there, or?
They stay for the whole event, correct.
Okay.
But that's a marathon, right?
That's a marathon, that's a lot, that's longer than this, correct, half marathon.
But it's guaranteed that they're not leaving for anything?
They stay, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the organization pays for them. At their event, they also have EMTs, and I believe, paramedics at the finish line, so if anybody goes down at the finish line, there's somebody there.
Okay.
The feet marathon was the first time this year, they had staff at the finish line, and then they had an ambulance respond for, I think they had at least one go down during the event, so.
Do we have anything like that for the Mad Dash? Is there any support at the finish line?
Again, I should, I should just point out that these are all marathons he's talking about, and pretty much any marathon that you'd run in, a half or a full, you would want that kind of support at the finish line, but with a 5K and a 10K, it's literally over within 30 minutes. I should also say that this race has been run for 26 years now, and we've never had an issue with that.
But the popularity has grown, I mean, you have, how many people attend, you know, this 5K and 10K race versus those marathons, we're talking about 100 versus 500, right?
Yeah, we get anywhere from 300 to 500. I would say maybe 70% of those run in the 5K.
So, thoughts, you agree with the way it is?
I think so.
Okay.
Do we know how much it costs to, you know, and you said to Northern Dutch staff the marathon?
I don't have the figures, I'm sure Matt Lenick does, and so does Kyle, they know what they cost, I know the fairgrounds contract some for some of the events there, I don't know what their hourly rates are.
I could speak to that.
Okay.
I might also say, this is a charity race, so.
Yeah, no, we understand, I just, our general...
I don't think we should be charging these guys for an ambulance, this is a non-for-profit thing here.
That's where we're going.
That's not where I was going.
Okay. So, I'll make the motion to approve the event application, with the condition that we have the voluntary ambulance crew staffed and available for the event.
Second.
Discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just a note on the event applications, I know this one's coming up quickly, and it's, you know, our event application process is still new, but just a general notice to make every effort to get it in, I believe it's 180 days in advance of the event, so that would make it much easier to deal with the issues that may, may or may not come up as the event approaches.
120.
120 days. 120?
Well, 120 is the time within which your decisions was being made, 180 is when the application's supposed to come in.
Okay. So, just clear that up again, 180 days to get your application in prior to the date of the event, and then the village, per the code, is required to make the decision within 120 days, so 60 days to look at, review the application, so roughly two of these meetings. Along the same lines, we have Tom Trout here, who also has an event application in with us, I'll light Tom up to address us. Do we have anything for this one, Karen?
They're all under number 10, all the special requests.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees, I have an application in front of you pertaining to a police community-type outreach event, it's a one-day event, it is for September 12th, Saturday, from about 9:00 to noon-ish, probably shorter period of time, you guys, you guys want to review this before I talk, or are you okay?
No, we actually don't have it.
You don't have it, okay.
No, but I think we review it, we got the idea, go ahead, give us your...
So, this came about through a couple of events I've attended over the past few months, both locally and regionally, the community concerns about the negative, negative tone of the police and community nationally, so, somebody thought something should be done, some of them were involved in law enforcement, others were not, so, so I kind of got in a conversation with one of the local regional community leaders, and he thought to put something together like this would be good, it's like a, it's like a farmer's market showcases the farmers' products and services to the community, so what we want to do here is allow law enforcement to showcase themselves to the community, and sort of develop a relationship, even though I don't think there is a problem here with that, but it does develop a closer sort of relationship. I've approached the chief of our police, Pete Dunn first, and then also the sheriff, so we have two of the three involved at this point, and until you guys, you know, either agree on this, I won't approach the state about it, but I'm sure they'll be happy to be a part of it. So, what the event will entail is, sort of, it's not a new sort of concept, it's sort of like what you see at the fairgrounds, where the sheriff will have child ID type thing, and the K-9 program, have a demonstration, they'll have maybe something different, like a bike rodeo, or, these are all concepts that are out there, not nailed in cement, but Chief Dunn has talked about providing a child ID service, the sheriff offered a K-9 service, also possibly having a bike raffle from the sheriff's office, a number of things, enough to fill up those three hours at most, so, it doesn't conflict with any other community-type event going on, like soccer, or something like that, so it does sort of fill a void, that we can...
There's no soccer on the 12th?
No, there's no games on 12th, so I understand from the president of the league, so...
Oh, okay, very good.
So, we'll have something to do, so.
We'll be there, then.
Right.
There's the Good Shepherd Flea Market.
The Good Shepherd Flea Market on the 12th, so, whatever, we'll roll it into a perfect...
Perfect complement.
It's no cost to anybody, so it's just open to the public, it's at the corner, did I mention the corner of, our four corners here, another traffic light at Foster's parking lot, and the owner of the property has been the first to agree to it, so.
How long of an event is it?
At least nine to, at most nine to 12, maybe 9:30 to 11:30, we'll have to see how it goes. At least nine to, at most nine to twelve, maybe nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, we'll have to see how it goes. Any questions about it, I could certainly, you know, answer more details if you guys have specifics, so.
Do you guys have any more, any questions, uh, about the event, and we have the approval of the property owner, obviously?
And it's gonna be the sheriffs?
Sheriffs, village police. Village police is the lead on this, well, I call them the lead, they're the first to be involved, it wouldn't happen without you guys, so, so Pete, Pete and his office will be involved. Many departments don't have a child ID anymore, they don't offer it, and we're lucky to have that here, if it happens, so.
That's the one where you get the card with the photo on it?
Yeah, the get, the card will be given to the family members, that's what I understand. They get to keep the card, nobody keeps it, and there's no database that's involved in that.
So we have, you, what do you do, you line up like the people who do the school photos, come out and do a similar thing?
There's no photo, just the frame prints now.
Oh.
We're just doing the frame prints and photos.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right. So I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, event application as submitted.
One second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
So, appreciate it, I'll try to roll in some businesses to be partnerships in this, they, they might, uh, wanna donate something to it, so I appreciate your support.
Thanks, Tom. Oh, thank you, Karen. I thought you wanted to stay for the stuff, so. Pete, do you have anything for us?
No, that's it, I'll give you my question about any other events, I think we're all set.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think we have any other questions, but since you're here, I figured we'd-
The fairgrounds is all ready with their new entrance?
We're all set, yes, we're just finishing the other day.
They're all set with the new entrance, it's all ready to go. Uh, again, this year, the sheriff's office will be doing the traffic in and out. State police and the security will be on the grounds, and we'll be doing everything, you know, surrounding the fairgrounds. Um, and they're all set. Um, I think their parking attendant, so we'll have to just adjust a little bit for the amount of traffic they'll be, uh, entering in, it'll be going in a lot faster than it was last year, so. We had a meeting the other day, and everything's, everything seems to be ready to go. We'll be doing the same thing in case after the events, they have a lot of people that, you know, can't get out. We'll probably, uh, on certain concert nights, close off the side streets coming out of the fairgrounds, meaning Chestnut and Livingston, as they come out of Parsonage. But that's only for a brief amount of time, where we, uh, put the barricades up and, uh, get the traffic out this side of the village. But that's been the same for the last five years, so that hasn't changed either. We're all set.
Thank you.
All right. Mike, take care.
So we'll go on to the water department. I guess the first order of business there is to appoint, um, Gary Bassett as the liaison to the, to the water department. But I will give the report here, um, today, we're working through, um, an issue with the tap at the park. We're still working through that one up at Thompson Azarela, in terms of the need for a, uh, a meter versus some kind of leak detection technology. This past month, uh, they treated fourteen million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons of water, um, after the backwash, a net of fourteen point two six six million. Had a couple, a couple line breaks, and a couple, couple successful repairs. And we have a vacation buyout request for a hundred and ten hours from Tom Albank. Confirmed with Pat that he does have the time available. I'm so like to make the motion to approve that request as submitted.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to wastewater. Yes. Oh, you want this? First order of business here is to appoint Sean Kemp as the liaison to the wastewater department. But I'll give the report here tonight. Treated four point oh three eight million gallons of wastewater, fifty-one thousand, six hundred gallons of sludge processed, which equates to sixty-three hundred and twenty-one pounds of sludge. One thing they have going on down there, we just had some engineering, uh, come in today, uh, on the headworks installation, or building a shed over the, the in, um, the Influent pit where the raw sewage comes into the plant, uh, to make it weatherproof and improve the workability there. So that's, uh, moving through its engineering phase, and I think August twenty-sixth is the next, uh, next step in that process, to have the plans hopefully ready to go out to bid. And John Fenton is overseeing that one with Pete Ratchen. Make sure, one other thing there is we installed a, their old-school punch clock, uh, has moved on to the graveyard of time clocks, so we got a new one, which is a thumbprint, and it's connected through the cloud, so we can, uh, access it from the office here. So, uh, to assist us with payroll, so that's the, the second, uh, the second biometric clock that we've installed. But the different one, I think, are we a week into it, or only three, four days?
Three days.
Three days, how's it going?
So far, so good.
So far, so good, so, um, it's kind of step two in the trial, hopefully this is an improvement over the first clock we have, and eventually we'll be replacing all the time sheets and punch clocks with biometrics. That will all work together with payroll to improve our accountability and efficiency. I think that's it for wastewater. Onto the fire department.
Fire department.
The, uh, monthly call volume breakdown for the month of July. Fire department responded to twenty-two EMS calls in the town and twenty in the village, and provided mutual aid six times for a total of forty-eight EMS calls. They responded to nine fire calls in the town and nine in the village, and provided, uh, mutual aid at one time for a total of nineteen fire calls. And, and motor vehicle accidents, there was eight in the town, four in the village, uh, for a total of twelve. To date, they've responded to two hundred and eighty-nine, um, two hundred and eighty-nine calls in the town, three hundred and fifteen in the village, and provided mutual aid forty-nine times, for a total of six hundred and fifty-three calls. The other thing I wanted to report, Ethan and I spoke about it, but I'll let the rest of the, the other trustees know, I met with the truck committee last week, and they're continuing to meet. They've been meeting with manu- different manufacturers to develop a specification, uh, for a truck to replace fifty-nine fourteen. So I think that's coming to an end, um, and they hope to have a completed specification to us in October. And we're hopeful to go out to bid, uh, for that truck then. Been pretty thorough, they've been doing it for a couple of years now, we know, we've known that fifty-nine fourteen is pretty old, I think it's twenty-six years old, or twenty-seven years old, and it's the one that we fixed, did some minor repairs to last year to keep it going, but-
The engine, that's the one with the engine problem?
That was the one with the engine, yes.
Some minor repair.
Yeah, minor repair.
Well, I mean, minor, compared to what the cost of a new truck is, um, yeah, we spent twenty thousand versus-
Oh, yeah.
The budget for this truck will be between four and four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So what happens to the old truck? When the time comes, we'll-
Go out to-
Put it out to bid.
Bid for, yeah. Unfortunately, they have little to no value.
We'll put a grapple on the chest.
There you go.
Okay.
But, uh, but that's all I have for the fire department.
Okay.
I, I should say this, is there, I'm not familiar with this process, so is there something we should do ahead of time for the funding of this truck?
Unless you have capital reserve, you have to go out and bond.
Right, right, but is there something that we do, do prior to going out to bid, or only after the bids are received?
Once you determine what the cost is going to be.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And then we're talking probably twelve to eighteen months for delivery if it's, if it's a custom built, correct? That's what we're looking at?
It could be sure.
Okay.
Could be sure, 'cause we might be looking at something that's maybe, um, a little bit more standard, a little bit off the shelf.
Okay. Which would be quicker, but probably not until after next June first.
Yes, for sure.
To the following fiscal year, so definitely not that we have to-
Right.
Scramble for today.
From what I'm told.
Yes. Okay.
Is that, that would be our preference?
I would think so.
Okay.
'Cause the tax cap's gonna be three-quarter of a percent, so we should have a lot of, a lot of spare money come, come the following fiscal year. Howie, street department?
Yes. Uh, all mowing was completed in the parks, uh, intersections, and clearing brush from the road signs. Pot-hall repair was done on Chestnut Street, and also blacktop was, repair was done there. They started painting the stop sign lines, and the curbs are being, uh, painted, and ninety percent of the curbs have been completed. Brush pickup on the north side and the south side was completed on eight-five-fifteen. The drainage pipe on Rockefeller Road was completed. That was alongside the new road we put down there. Goes to the stream. Um, mulch deliveries have been done, are ongoing. And, uh, a catch basin was replaced on Chestnut Street, which was blacktop and seeded. John Fenton has some requests here, and two, and we talked about this last month, I think.
Right. Do we have anything new on the brush, um, schedule?
Got some drafts together that I'm gonna review with John.
Okay, so you're gonna review them with John, then we'll have them?
Okay, after that.
Okay.
And install a crosswalk, uh, on Parsonage Street and Route three oh eight, that, we have to go through the state for that, right?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, if they want to, um, in order for the state to approve it, it'll have to meet the ADA code with the cutouts and the, I forget what they call, Scott, the, the pad that you can feel?
Yeah, there's a detection pad.
Detection pads, okay.
Didn't say that, no.
I didn't say that, I said the pad you can feel, so it's, it's a detection pad, okay.
Okay.
Good. That's it.
Any questions, street department? No.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So from the time that you developed this brush pickup, does that have a public hearing, right?
Yes.
The schedule would not require the hearing, we can change the schedule, but if we're gonna post-
It'll incorporate the fact that the schedule can be published by resolution as to whatever date you want.
But, uh, if we're gonna have fines associated, or how about limits on what we pick up, is it?
Well, that can be incorporated, and that's part of the drafts that we go through with John and see exactly how much he wants to change.
Okay.
So the, so the law currently reads that we provide brush pickup?
No, there's no law that-
Okay, so that's why I'm wondering why we got, we have to, it seems like it was just been established over time, that it's been what we do.
'Cause you want some enforcement authority-
Yeah.
To prevent them from putting it out on the days before.
I think it's changed over time, I think there was some limitation.
I guess that's, should've been my question, is that, that's why we're doing it, okay.
Yeah, we're trying to tie it all in together, so we're not, you know, imposing a schedule before we have, um, some enforcement capability. To roll it out as a package. So, um, planning and zoning, do you have anything? Scott?
I, I don't have anything more than what you have here.
Than what's submitted?
There are some pretty impressive numbers in there, you see the amount of, I think they issued thirteen building permits?
Yep.
And, um, did two CO searches, which means that's probably a transfer of property. But really nothing compared to here. Earth-shattering.
All right, and while we're here, I have one more appointment to make, and I hope it's not too much of a surprise, Sean, but I'll appoint you as the liaison to the zoning board of appeals.
Excellent.
And I think that, that rounds out all of our, all of our appointments for our new, uh, new trustees. Onto the police department. In July, there were twenty-one incidents in the town, one hundred and nine in the village, twelve tickets in the town, one hundred and nine in the village, a total of ten arrests and five accidents. To note, there were fourteen dog complaints, uh, called in, just, um, you know, as a public service announcement, the town provides the animal control officer, uh, which, um, covers, he covers the village, so if you do have a problem with a, your lost dog or, or complaint, please call the town of Ryenbeck. Uh, they handle, um, any complaints, dog or otherwise. So, that's all I have for the police department. Howie, tree commission?
Uh, we do not have a tree committee report.
Okay. Pat had those two on there, do those mean anything to you? No?
I don't know what they, what was resolved with that, yeah.
Okay. So no tree committee report as of the moment?
No.
Okay.
It's on its way.
Okay. Parks and Recreation Committee, um, we actually have our meeting tomorrow night, so there's not much to report. We are planning, uh, a fall event, I don't have the date in front of me, I know it's in October. I'm gonna talk to John Fenton and the highway crew about, um, starting some, some structural renovations up there, some of the easy ones that they, they're able to do. Next, under special requests. I don't have the paperwork, but I'm pretty, at least the one on the Buckley Middle School, they have a request to, um, do you have those there, Pat?
Yeah.
Do you wanna just?
I'm gonna pass them all there.
Yeah, then I'll have the right dates.
There was one that came in late, too.
You have the other ones after this, though, too, right? All right, so we have a request from the Buckley Middle School, which is Mr. Friskanet. Uh, last year they did, um, a project where they hung lemurs from the trees. And I think it's a, they have some kind of relationship with students from Madagascar, and that's to bring some awareness and talks about their mission, they have little codes that you can scan. Um, I think it was a success last year. They're requesting to hang the lemurs on October sixteenth, a Friday, and remove them on October twenty-third, also a Friday. I don't know if anyone noticed, some hanging around the village last year, but they're relatively colorful, colorful lemurs. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, next we have a, actually, we have two from the Chamber of Commerce. If you don't know, you may recognize the president of the Chamber of Commerce.
He's right over here, Mr. Sean Kemp.
They have an application for the summer sidewalk sale, August fourteenth to sixteenth, uh, with a rain date of the twenty-first through the twenty-third. Did we not approve all the yard sales, Pat? Weren't there three? Do you know that?
For the chamber, you mean?
Yeah. I thought we approved-
I thought we did it the last, at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I thought we approved all three at one time, but this is coming up on August.
Right, she submitted-
This weekend, right?
That's this weekend, yeah.
She submitted that one as well as the next event.
Well, the next one is the-
Christmas tree lighting.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we already approved this, this one, the, I think we approved three, there's a, the spring, summer, and fall?
Yeah.
Okay, but, uh, since it is this weekend, we'll make a motion to reapprove it, if we haven't done so already?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all's in favor?
Aye.
Epstein?
Yes. That's good, fine. So the next one, um, is the request from the Chamber of Commerce for the, for the Christmas tree lighting, which will be held, I believe it's the Sunday of Thanksgiving weekend. No, incorrect.
Maybe the Sunday before?
What's that?
Is it the Sunday before, possibly?
It says it's Saturday, November twenty-first.
Okay.
At five-thirty PM, so Saturday, the twenty-first. Beginning at three PM, uh, in the Savings Bank, or at Oremic Bank Plaza, with the parade beginning about five. And I think this is the same program as it always is, and I think Pete signed off on it, correct?
He had gotten it.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve that as submitted.
Second.
Discussion, Howie? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein?
Okay. Here we have another one to place signs for Art Studio Views on Labor Day weekend. You guys seen this one?
No.
Okay, it's about, they wanna place signs- Eighth Annual Art Studio Views Tour in Northern Dutchess and Southern Columbia. They want the signs to be posted Friday, September 4th through Monday, September 7th. 18 by 24 inch signs near the studios to help direct visitors. Have we had this before?
Yeah, this is something we've done.
I've seen the signs before. I don't remember approving them.
Labor Day.
Okay. So it's been done before?
I believe the signs were taken down last time because they did not have permission. So this time, they're.
Oh, they're, okay.
They're actually asking.
Okay. Do we know how many studios there are on Ryback that they're going to be identifying?
The envelope that I gave you.
This thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Has a map. I think there's three in the village of Ryback.
Okay. Maybe it just says where they are.
Okay, right here, Wine Coop?
There's one on Wine Coop?
It says 17.
What's the purple mean?
So Pasco, Patton Road, Bollbecker.
Yes, 37. Dean Valles is one. Eight is blue. It's a B.
They list them right here on the addresses. So it looks like there should be one, two, three.
Gardens, Ryback. No, not the sponsor.
It looks like three in the village.
Where are the other three?
There, under the. Bollbecker. Here.
Oh, Tom Cale.
There, and one.
Deny that one.
Is that? Yeah.
This is good, but except for this one.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll make the motion to approve as submitted to place the signs directly in front of the village art studios mentioned on the tour.
Is that where they want to place them?
Right.
It says near studios.
Yeah. So just three signs adjacent to studios or directly in front of.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that the last of them there, Pat? We get those all? Want to take a brochure? So I'll keep one.
That is four.
There's one more?
Wine Coop, West Chestnut.
Wine Coop may or may not be.
East Market in Montgomery. Oh.
All right.
That's all.
What's that?
That's all of the rest.
Okay. Sounds good. I think I might have sent my agenda back there with this video, but, okay. Take that back. Get us back on track. All right. Other business, we have an employee handbook that Gary Kenton assembled for us initially before his departure. And Pat has been working on it in the meantime. How's that coming, Pat?
I, I've looked through it and I've been adding to it. And the recent classes that I've gone to have helped in kind of clarifying some things. And I'd like, I'm really looking forward to working with one of the trustees to proceed on this and to get it completed.
Okay. Well, sounds like a job for Gary.
There you go, Gary. All right. What else can we give Gary tonight?
So do I put down in the minutes that he's been appointed to the handbook?
Sure. Any follow-up on the street performer busking?
I told you, there's some constitutional issues. We're trying to add enforcement on that. I have been talking to Sergeant Dunn, so we're trying to see if there's any, unless there's a safety issue blocking sidewalks.
Okay.
It's, it's really a First Amendment right.
Okay. And that was.
Can there be any kind of a limit, though? Like of how many?
Well, that's the point. If it gets to a point where all of a sudden you've got the band on the corner blocking the sidewalk, then I think the sergeant has loitering. I mean, there's issues. You can't put people out in the streets to walk around these people, so.
Right. And the same thing would apply to the dueling religious spokespeople that are out as well, right?
Haven't heard about those yet, but yes.
Okay. Well, it's like we have two groups, one on either side of the bank parking lot. You know, one's rather outspoken, the other's more low-key, but.
Once again, as long as they are not blocking the public right of way, harassing individuals in the street. I mean, free speech, they're allowed to essentially stand there and espouse their vows.
Say what they want. Can we designate spots? Can we designate spots for that type of activity?
That even runs into, I mean, there's limitations on that.
Yeah.
When you say public right of way, is that just like the?
Sidewalk, I mean, it's a, anywhere where the public's able to traverse.
If they're on part of private property.
Private property can be controlled by the property owner.
Like, like the bank parking lot, some of that is private property where they're actually standing.
I think both of the spots are private property. It's just off the sidewalk in both cases. I think both places are the bank parking lot. The one maybe, the curthaus property, but I think it's on the border. Maybe it's part of the bank.
I'm familiar with the dueling religious groups, but who's the other?
Saxophone player. Or the French horn?
French horn, the bongos.
Bongos.
Singer sometimes. So we've, we've got multiple correspondence from concerned residents of the community about the, about the noise, the impact on their businesses.
Business owners.
Et cetera, so. So we're doing our part in, in, you know, researching what our, what our responsibility is or ability to, you know, control it in some way. How about, are we still working on permitting for the sidewalk sales? I know we came up, there was a different, not the chamber-approved ones, but the ones in front of the individual stores. There was.
I, no, I haven't, so we're talking about a couple, two different things is, I think we've, well, there's an outside display issue that we discovered just recently that there's been an amendment to the village law that allows for outside display. I don't know if you're familiar.
I remember that from years ago. I think Deb Green helped bring that ordinance.
The one that allows for a certain size clothes rack and.
30 inches, 6 feet.
Display and the location of it adjacent to the building, so.
Yeah, so that's addressed in that way. So there can be outside displays with no limitation, because that's written into the village law. But as far as having sidewalk sales, I, I think that we're mistaking one for the other, so I.
Right.
I have to see if maybe the outside display clarifies what it is that some of the merchants.
So I think you have to look at each one on a, at a, the code enforcement officer, look at them on a case-by-case basis. And maybe review with them the restriction of where it can and cannot be.
Right, because if they display outside, it's not, it's not a sidewalk sale. If they, if they display within the confines of the, of the law.
But once it goes out towards the curb and takes up the space between the trees inside, then it becomes a sidewalk sale. And how about, they're also going to look into permitting for garage sales or yard sales?
Haven't heard about that one yet, but I haven't heard about that one either.
Thought we talked about that here last time. Remember, we had someone complain about it.
Perpetual yard.
Perpetual yard sales. We're talking about permitting for.
Yeah, I didn't know. I, we talked about it.
Yeah, you and I talked about it. Maybe we didn't talk as a.
Though we talked here. Anyway, can, can we look into that, then? Rich, too, some kind of permitting process? I think that's it for the outstanding.
The sidewalk sale law, if you want to get into that, we determined that that wasn't going to be a planning or zoning change, but that was going to be a village.
Right.
So I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty simple. We can limit it to the three that are.
Right.
Organized by the Chamber of Commerce. And then any other outside sale would be work within the outside or exterior display.
Right. Okay.
Do we, do we want to, do we want to address that in an official way?
Well, I don't know that we.
I think we may have to, I think we may have to change the current law.
Put that into the code. Can we?
I had spoken to John Fenton about getting together with you to discuss the specifics, because I really don't know what it is that you want to do. If we could sit down and go through it, then I can look at the code and tailor it for what you.
I mean, can we put it in the code that it's going to be driven by the three weekends that's identified by the Chamber of Commerce? I mean, can I go?
I'm sure, you know, I mean, right now, the code allows anyone to apply, I believe.
Right. For 15 days, but nine of them are already consumed by the three, three-day Chamber of Commerce events. So we were allowing, I think we approved somebody for six additional days.
But in, at the end.
But might as well just.
Alls they wanted to do is display some stuff outside, so it wasn't technically a sidewalk sale.
Okay. Well, I think we, it kind of cleaned itself up a little bit, just by finding that piece of the code.
Thanks to Colleen.
Yes. Okay. Minutes approval. Guys, got any, before we go on to these, you got any questions on them?
I, you know, everybody's.
I'm sorry?
There aren't paper copies in there.
No, there won't be paper copies. Any questions on them? Scott?
No, I didn't have any.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, May 20th, June 9th, June 23rd, July 1st, July 14th, 2015.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm steaming.
Okay. Anybody else got any other business? Did we forget anything? Pat?
Do you want to talk about Dutchess County Community Block Grant?
I'm sorry?
I need to see what the word is to where it is.
Oh, we tabled them from earlier, from the treasurer's report. But thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, what were you saying, Pat?
I think that's a different one.
Community block grant.
Yeah, so we have some application for that, I believe is due on October 2nd. Is that right? So we need to start planning an application for the block grant. Because of the median income of the village, we remain eligible only for ADA compliant improvements. So kind of limits our, our scope. That's where the last crosswalks came from.
Yeah.
So we've had some, some ideas we've, we've talked about, but we'll try to bring something together for, for the next one.
And can I just mention that I'm going to be placing some forms on the website?
Yes, please do. So on the website, we're going to be trying to post a lot of the permit forms. I think some of the zoning and building ones are on there already.
They're already on there.
But some of the ones are going to go that are more specific to the, to the village itself, such as the event application, the application to use this building.
Yeah, tree permit.
Tree permits.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, but Rich is still working on that tree permit application.
I've got that permit, but as I told you, I also want to look at revising the law to talk about this program that you have with the 50/50 sharing.
Right.
And I'll get you a draft on that.
Okay, so I'll hold off on putting that on. Okay. I can still give out the one we have.
Sure.
So I do have a couple, two other quick things. The first, we had a, a visit from PESH. What's that stand for?
Public Employees Safety.
Council.
Council.
Counsel, is it? Okay. So it's a state agency and they came by over a year ago, I think it was. And that we were in violation because we did not have workplace violence posters posted in all of our work locations. So we spent the last year in training, developing policies and procedures. And Pat did a wonderful job keeping everything in perfect order. We had our follow-up visit, was that this morning?
Yeah, this morning.
It seemed like yesterday, but anyway. So we had our follow-up visit from the PESH inspector this morning. And thanks again to Pat, we passed in flying, with flying colors. Everything is in order. Everybody's been trained. Policies are, have been created, with the exception of one revision.
Yeah, we just have to change the wording on.
Okay. Or the wording on one policy. Ryan?
That's right.
Do you want to do that right now?
Yeah.
So basically, the issue is, one, the policy referred to had a, a statement in there, three or four words that said, "While on village property."
Right, and it was while.
So we have to remove, so I would like to amend the policy to reflect the removal of "on village property" so that our employees are protected from workplace violence wherever they may be. That's a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.